Right, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 19th of January have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I assign these as the correct record of those meetings? Emma, have we any apologies perhaps?
Thank you Chairman, we have apologies from Councillors Dennis Lee, Kike Miralles, Nick Williams, David Round, Jim Edwards and Maurice Byham. Councillors John Williamson and Patricia Ellis are in attendance as substitutes.
Right, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non pecuniary interests or pecuniary interests to declare? Right, questions from members of the public, have we any questions received from members of the public?
None, say Chairman.
Right, so if we get on to the Committee Forward Programme, which is on page seven. This is the Committee's work programme which has been drawn up following the Committee's discussion at various previous meetings and takes account of items identified on the latest executive forward programme as due to come forward for decision. Members, you are invited to identify any additional items for the executive forward that the committee may wish to add to its work programme. Are there any additional items that you would like to add on? Are you content to note the Committee work programme? Good. Right, the next item on the agenda is the Thames Basin Special Heat Protection Area which I think Mr Byums is concerned with. And I would like to ask Graham Parrott if he could introduce the report please.
Yes, thank you Chairman, and I apologise if I repeat matters here that members are very familiar with, but I think it's just useful just to step back slightly to the starting point here, and that is that because of the European Habitat Thames Basin Heaths, of which a small part of the actual Thames Basin Heaths is within Waverley, but the reason it's important to Waverley is because the zone of influence around it essentially covers pretty well all of Farnham, and it has been the practice of this authority and the other authorities that are affected by the SPA which have to do with the issue of avoidance of significant effects on the SPA as a result of additional visitors. And the approach that this council has followed, and again is followed by other authorities that are affected by the same SPA, is a combination of providing alternative space, this is SANG, Suitable Alternative Natural Green Space, and also the separate contribution that develops as pay towards the access management and monitoring of the SPA itself by Natural England. When Waverley first started on in this process, the SANG that was identified was Farnham Park. As you know, the Farnham Park is a very large area, but we had to, with Natural England at the time, try and identify what capacity, if you like, there might be there, and on a very precautionary sort of principle, I think we started with a hundred and thirty hectares, I think is the total size of the park, reduced down to twenty-five percent, which is about twenty-one hectares or thereabouts, and in fact at the very first release of SANG was only just under eleven hectares. What's happened in the intervening years, and you'll see there was an update for example in 2013, was to release the capacity up to that twenty-one point two five hectares. We've had further, we've done further monitoring, which many members will know in terms of dwelling sizes, and those who are on the Western Planning Committee will know the regular updates we provide, and we're now monitoring both in terms of numbers of dwellings but also keeping a close eye on the size of dwellings, because the impact is linked to the number of people, more than the number of dwellings, that's the formula that's used to determine how much SANG is required. We also had the visitor survey carried out on the council's behalf by Footprint Ecology which looked at the capacity issue, and it's that that has identified, in fact, that there is more capacity, I think, available than originally identified, and that releasing that capacity obviously increases the capacity for, in terms of dealing with development in and around Farnham. So this report isn't about changing fundamentally the nature of the policy, it's not about asking you to approve a different SANG, it is about the additional capacity that we believe exists at Farnham Park and has been endorsed by Natural England in our discussions with them throughout this process. What we are proposing to do, and it's due to start on the fourteenth, so next week, is a consultation on the amended avoidance strategy. So the purpose of this report tonight was obviously to give members the opportunity to consider this, so that they can feed comments back to the executive, because clearly what will happen after the consultation period is we will take the representations, the views of the ONS Committee will also be forwarded to the executive, which will then consider those, decide whether to agree the revised strategy, and obviously in due course if they decide to agree it, that would be a recommendation to full council. Thank you Chairman.
Right, thank you Graham. I believe that councillor Fraser wishes to speak. Councillor Fraser, you have four minutes to talk on the subject, after which I may curtail you. Please proceed.
Thank you Chairman. It would appear that there has been poor management in the practical application of regulations regarding the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area and the Farnham Park Suitable Accessible Natural Green Space. Whilst the criticisms came from the councillors, Farnham councillors principally, they were too easily dismissed. But now Inspector Geoffrey Winslow of the Bristol Planning Inspectorate has made a specific critical comment, and he will be more difficult to dismiss. He makes specific reference to irregularities with the section 106 unilateral undertakings, the absence of a Waverley Community Infrastructure Levy, and the application of the clause one two three of the regulations. He maintains, as do I, that the objectives of the delivery framework have been misapplied and in many cases simply ignored. SANG in Farnham Park was for a short term only. The provisions that justify twenty-one and point two five hectares limit are not sufficiently enhanced by any additional parking area or by footpath and hedging improvement to warrant an extension of that SANG limit. The access management amounts were noticeable by each poo bin. Monitoring has been entirely neglected for over seven years. The continuing apportionment of SANG poo patches in Farnham Park is to the detriment of the integrity of the SPA and the three rare species of ground nesting birds which inhabit the heathland. Years of promoting SANG has now become counterproductive. It has encouraged dog ownership in the Farnham area, owners come to appreciate the wildness of the heathland, help themselves to the Farnham Park poo bag supplies and then take their dog to the SPA. Access points to the SPA are frequently bedecked by festoons of doggy bags hanging from a neighbouring fence or neatly piled at the side of the path. This is not mere anecdote. I live on the very edge of the SPA, right next to an access point. I walk regularly across Farnham Park from home to town and back by a variety of routes. As I walk, I count heads. Of late, I count more dog heads than human heads. Many dog walkers have two dogs or more, many are professional dog walkers, many neglect or simply refuse to pick up the droppings. Farnham Park is being degraded by this policy of SANG mitigation and the health hazard which results. I remind you that this is a Grade Two listed recreational facility, a precious fragment of medieval deer hunting park and a treasured asset which is being exploited for section 106 gain. I am not alone in this view. Mr Deves of St James Terrace was quoted in last week's Farnham held under the headline 'Residents up in arms over dog owners who continually flout the law'. Never fear, Waverley are on the case, bag dispensers will be topped up we are told, and the bins are regularly emptied. However, it's the unexploded landmines of dog poo that remain on the ground that are the real threat, and an increase in the wretched SANG allowance will make matters worse. Let us return for a moment to Inspector Winslow, the delivery framework and the avoidance strategy. Many authorities use SANG mitigation and the maladministration is widespread, but though we may all be in it together, there is little comfort in numbers. This committee could be instrumental in correcting the application of the habitats regulations. Waverley has four alternative potential SANG sites. I have asked for the figures for SANG mitigation, but for two months I've waited in vain, so they must be quite substantial sums. By putting all these together, we might develop a SANG site elsewhere, but in truth, it is a failed policy and should be reconsidered in its entirety. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Fraser, I'm not sure if this committee can give any kind of disciplinary action on whether or not dog walkers should pick up the refuse of their respective pets, but we can perhaps answer the rest of your question. Graham, can you answer it?
I think Chairman, all I can say is two things. First of all, obviously as I said in my introduction, this was followed up from the recent survey that was carried out for us by Footprint Ecology to consider the capacity of the park. Their approach was scrutinised by Natural England, and in fact Natural England I think raised a couple of questions, and so the actual capacity that's been identified in the report was following comments made by Natural England, so we are happy as officers that what the approach we're taking is one that is supported in principle by Natural England. The issue, we are in it altogether in the sense that with lots of other authorities affected by this, there's the same issue, but multiple authorities have had plans taken through examinations, appeal decisions, the endorsement of Natural England, and we have to be guided by them, and if there is any requirement to review the approach or driver to review the approach, I would expect that to come through Natural England or the Joint Strategic Partnership Board which represents all the authorities. I don't think it's something that can be initiated or should be initiated by an authority. You know, we are working alongside Natural England and they are supportive of the approach that's being taken by us and other authorities in terms of avoidance measures.
Are you satisfied with that councillor Fraser, that this in fact is not a subject that this committee can actually decide, it does come under Natural England as the arbitrariness?
I didn't expect for one moment that I will be acclaimed, but I would like the committee to consider what has been said, seriously.
We have noted it, and if any members of the committee wish to talk on the subject, they may do so.
Sorry, are you throwing it open to the committee now? Yeah, okay. Yes, I mean I'm very disappointed in this, and not disappointed in the increase in SANGs, but I just feel it's just lacking in fact. You know, you've gone and you've used similar words like capacity, which, you know, capacity to me was always the twenty-one point two five, not the number of people. I would just like more facts really before I make decisions on things, I just thought that it was a little short of data comparison, just generally a little bit lightweight. Having said all that, I must correct councillor Fraser, both Farnham and Waverley have commissioned reports on SANGs, and they're not queuing up to give us SANGs, there are not four or five SANG sites available, this is one of the big issues for Farnham. And one of the reasons, another reason that I'm very disappointed in this is that we are not prioritising this land. This is our avoidance strategy, it's not Natural England's. Natural England can endorse what we do, but it is our avoidance strategy, it is our way of developing our town. And Farnham has got a lot of brownfield sites, and one of the issues we've had in recent times is the capacity in terms of numbers has been going down, is a panic amongst people with town centre sites, because you cannot develop a single brownfield site in the centre of Farnham without a SANG provision. And one thing you cannot do on a brownfield site in the centre of a town is provide onsite SANGs, you cannot do it. And I thought this would be an ideal opportunity to revise our avoidance strategy. I've raised this before, and officers tell me they've taken legal advice on the old strategy, but that was created at a time when greenfield sites were not under threat, and we did not distinguish between brownfield and greenfield because we didn't need to. We needed to release some capacity to enable development in Farnham, but we didn't need to specify. Now we have a situation here, we may end up with another fourteen hundred, which may seem an awful lot, but the neighbourhood plan has pretty much nine hundred in it, and probably slightly more with developments coming on site. Western on Wednesday, we gave permission for forty-five dwellings. You know, we are actually actively trying to develop our brownfield sites in the town, because that is really where the residents tell us they want to see development, they want the wall me developed, they like the one that's going on to Swain and Jones. Basically, there's a lot of brownfield sites still in Farnham, along the Guilford Road for example, all of which could be developed and developed very well for the town, but not with our SANG capacity. And I just think this is so disappointing that we're not seizing this opportunity and making an avoidance strategy, I don't like that word as you know, it's a mitigation strategy, but to produce a mitigation strategy that enables us to do what the town wants, which is to develop its brownfield sites as well as some of the other sites that are coming on. And I just feel when we've got an opportunity like this to grab hold of this strategy and actually put something in place, at the moment, it'll be interesting to see when we go to Thursday, we're having our brief on the local plan, this number will not cover what rumour has it Farnham's going to be asked to take. So, you know, what are we doing if we haven't got the SANG capacity? We can't build a single house in this area, if we can't produce brownfield SANG capacity, we can't develop anything on brownfield site. I just think this is a missed opportunity, I think it's airy fairy, I don't think we've got enough facts and data, I do want increased capacity of SANGs, I'm not opposed to that at all, but I do want it prioritised please, it's the town that we want developed, it's our biggest settlement, we want to start with, as the MPPF does, with town centre development and then go out sequentially, we're following all the guidelines if we do that, but if this strategy does not specify that priority will be given to brownfield development, we're going to end up with a load of inappropriate development on greenfield sites and bum sites in the middle of the town that we can't develop, and I just think this is a wasted opportunity.
Thank you councillor Coburn. Graham Parrott, do you have any comments to make on her point that in fact we're not utilising the SANG to the best of capacity?
I think Chairman, councillor Coburn has raised the issue before about whether we can prioritise, and the advice we were given at that time was that we weren't in a position to do that. I think if the committee feel it's something you want us to explore further, we'll have another look at the issue, but I'm happy to do that, but that was the position that was advice we received at the time, was that you couldn't be selective in terms of saying you allocate on a sort of priority basis to certain types of development, but we can certainly take that away and have a look at it. I think the other thing Chairman, just thinking, if councillor Coburn is concerned that there is information that is missing and that maybe would be beneficial to the executive when they reconsider this, and I think it would be helpful to us as officers to know what things we might need to look at, what sort of facts and data aren't in here that councillor Coburn thinks would be helpful, we can certainly have a look at that.
I have every sympathy with the residents of Farnham and the points you raise, and I think we could quite easily bring this back at a future meeting, do you think so? That we might reconsider this, because I think there are issues which you've raised which perhaps we should...
Can I go back Chairman? Yes, I'm not trying to delay anything, you know, I really want to move on with this, so it's in nobody's interest to delay it. We couldn't go back on the old strategy and declare that we could use the brownfield because the lawyers said we couldn't, but this is different, we are revising it, so we're in a different situation now, we're revising the strategy, look at the strategy now, I'd be grateful if Graham and the team could go back and look at that. We just need some figures to make things, we haven't got any data to compare, we don't know the figures of the visitor survey, we don't know how it's changed, you know, we're just given a very brief, so just give us a bit more meat is really all I'm saying. I certainly don't want to delay it, I just want information on which I'm making this very important decision.
I think that's a very, could you produce that at the next meeting? Some figures, facts and figures on the exact amount of people who use the park and the amount of SANG etcetera, can you do that for the next meeting?
Chairman, just looking at the timetable on page fourteen, you know whilst Graham and I was speaking about what extra information we can feed in, I'm not sure there'll be another opportunity for the ONS Committee, I'm not sure when your next meeting is Chairman, June, but I mean this is heading towards the council meeting in July after the executive, so I mean we can certainly look to do that in terms of enhancing the document and members' understanding of the document, we can see what we can do, but whether we'll have the opportunity to come back to a full meeting of the ONS or not, I'm not sure.
I think ready to satisfy all the councillors in Farnham, the residents who have concerns about this, I think it would be a good idea if you could bring it back for the June meeting at the ONS and perhaps we can...
Sorry, I'll go away in a minute. I really don't want to delay it, I mean I just want the information sent to me so that, you know, I know, and then, you know, at a later date I can say, well hang on, no I got that wrong because I didn't really have the full understanding, that's the point I'm making. I don't want another meeting so much as an email just to give me the facts and figures so that at least I can answer any questions that the public puts to me, and actually more importantly, understand the issue myself. I understand SANGs, you know, I understand planning, it's not, that's not my issue, but it's how we suddenly end up having cosied our way through twenty-one point two five for all this time, watched the diminished capacity, then had the revised number from the two point four down to your one point nine nine, that I was, I understood, didn't quite agree with it, but understood, but this, we just seem to be leaping without the information, that's all I want, just some facts and figures, show me the ecology report, the facts and figures, show me the visitor survey, just give me the numbers, that's all, but do it by email please, I don't want to delay things.
Yeah, okay Graham, well then following this committee meeting, could you perhaps collate some figures and facts and just circulate it, either by email or by post to the members of this committee so that they fully understand?
Yes, what we are intending to do Chairman, to coincide with the consultation, is for the Footprint Ecology Report to be on the website, and the report that was commissioned to look at potential alternative SANG sites, so they will both be there, and I'm more than happy to arrange to send details of that to the members as well obviously.
Very much, councillor Gill.
Thank you Chairman, I'd like to pick up on some of the points that have already been raised, but before that I just want to, as we are the community or view and scrutiny committee, I'd like to raise something about the dog mess, because councillor Fraser seems to think this is destroying the park. I have a dog and I walk the dog in Farnham Park and I walk the dog in Gostrew Meadow, and there were issues in the past of dog mess on the pavement going towards both entrances to Farnham Park and to Gostrew Meadow, and I have been banging on before I became a Waverley councillor to members of the executive at Waverley saying, can we not do something about this dog mess? And now near Gostrew Meadow, there are little stickers put up by Waverley Borough Council saying, you know, pick up your dog mess or pay the price. Now it may be, it's a question of educating people and perhaps doing a bit of enforcement, it wouldn't take too often to catch people out and then they'd stop, they'd change their behaviour, but the idea that we should somehow not have people enjoying that amenity that is there for the whole community to me seems preposterous, that we would even suggest it, and that is being confused with the issue of the SANGs. Now in terms of the issue of the SANGs at Farnham Park, I was at a residents' meeting called by my residents in Upper Hail relating to some potential developments, including but not only limited to the hundred and eighty-nine homes that were being planned on land that is adjacent to Farnham Park, and these residents told me that it had been examined, that there has been a lot of resistance to this development, that it had been examined as a potential SANGs site, and that Natural England seemed to be happy it met all the criteria, and because it abuts Farnham Park that it might be able to be included in that, and of course I don't know anything about that as the local member, but I just wondered if there was anything that officers could clarify on that point.
Graham, can you answer that on the site adjacent to Farnham Park?
I think Jem, and the application I think that was submitted on that site did include a proposal to provide SANG within the site, so part of that site if you like was to be built on, part of it was to be provided as SANG with the idea of also making a connection between Farnham Park and this particular site now, I don't know, I think, but I'm absolutely sure, I think that planning application was withdrawn subsequently I think, but certainly that site adjacent to the park has been considered. I mean, in itself, it may be that the site as a whole might meet the criteria for SANG, but obviously if a landowner who has aspirations maybe to secure development on it is unlikely to put it forward and make it available entirely as SANG, but certainly in its location, if a development were deemed to be acceptable on that site, then there is the opportunity, I would guess, for them to be able to provide SANG provision within their site.
Right, I hope that, now as far as dog mess is concerned, you know I live near Rodborough Park, and we have exactly the same issue where members, sorry, where people who walk their dogs, put their dog mess in little bags and then hang them on the trees is completely unacceptable. If we can put a receptacle in the car park that can be emptied at frequent intervals, I hope that might satisfy you and councillor Fraser, that we are doing the best we can on removing this. Councillor Williams.
Thanks very much Chairman. I agree with much of what councillor Coburn said earlier, I was quite disappointed with this document, it really is quite thin and lacking in substantive detail, enough detail to allow us to make a decision really, or to make any recommendations. The subject is complicated, it's wide ranging, so I'd like to try and simplify it as much as possible with the officers' help. Firstly, as I see it, this is about ensuring that we have a strategy that satisfies the legal constraints, it's not about generating money, it's not about dog poo, it's about meeting the legal constraints. The habitat constraints are a major influence for Waverley, and if we're going to ensure that our local plan is robust, we've just got to get it right. The question asked by the inspector which Floyd Waverley's two thousand and six core strategy attempt still applies, he quite simply asked, where's the evidence that the mitigation is effective? He referred to the statutory instrument circular zero six two thousand and five, that law has not changed. At last week's executive meeting where I raised the subject, Mr Evans, who isn't here this evening, dismissed the point by saying that there's a lot of water that's passed under the bridge. That may be so, but my point was that the law hasn't changed, and I think we do need officers to confirm that paragraph one one three of the MPF refers to the statutory instrument zero six slash two thousand and five, which is the document that says that we cannot grant planning consent for relevant plans and projects unless we have an assessment containing convincing objective scientific evidence that it wouldn't contribute to a significant in combination effect on the protected habitat and species. So I suppose the first question to ask the officers, is that part of the MPPF, is it correct that the requirement for convincing evidence in circular zero six two thousand and five is the legal constraint that we need to satisfy? I mean it's a yes or a no?
I don't think you were contradicting the law, but...
But Chairman, I think that the point here is that we are one of a number of authorities grappling with exactly the same issue in terms of how you avoid and mitigate effects on European habitats. We know that Natural England supports the approach we and other authorities take, we know that other local plan inspectors have supported the approach, because those local plans would not have been passed had that not been the case, we know that planning appeal inspectors support the approach, because if they didn't, there wouldn't have been a number of planning permissions granted on appeal, so it isn't a case that Waverley in isolation is doing something different if you like. We are aware of what the requirements are, and we have to be guided by the approach that Natural England proposed, I mean this office does go back to the South East Plan and all the assessments done at the time, but we have been guided by the approach Natural England have taken, and Natural England are supportive of the continued approach of using SANG as a measure to avoid having an adverse impact on the SPAs, and on that basis I think we then believe that we are complying with the requirements, whether they are legal requirements or policy requirements, that's our position Chairman.
Could you switch off your mic? Just to say that I hope that answers your question, we are to a certain extent subservient to Natural England on this, and we are complying with every regulation that councillor Parrott...
Chairman, I have to disagree, we're not subservient to, and I'm getting lots of nods over here, we're not subservient to Natural England, it's our responsibility, we are the council, we make those decisions, and if they're wrong, it's us that are held to account, it is not Natural England. And the argument that we are all in it together just doesn't hold water.
And the argument that we are all in it together just doesn't hold water. You know, if everyone's doing it wrong, it doesn't mean to say that it's right. Anyway, if I could, if I could go on, I'm not sure we'll resolve that issue. We know, as you mentioned, from the, you didn't mention it, but it's on the forward programme, that Natural England's evidence is expected to come forward in the summer at the June, the June meeting. Using simple logic, I'm assuming that that we need, in order to grant consent, to have a robust local, and to have a robust local plan, that we have an appropriate assessment which, together with Natural England's evidence, provides the convincing, objective, scientific evidence required by law. I'm, I'm assuming that Natural England are going to produce that evidence and that we will get it in June. That the substantive evidence in, in this avoidance strategy, that the, the survey that we haven't seen all makes sense and that together, they go, they go, they go together and they provide that evidence which would give a robust document and a very important document for our local plan. But we haven't got it, we haven't got any of that. So I'm, I'm struggling to, to make any decisions when we've got zero evidence in front of us. I've said it before, but I, I, I think that the proposal is based on a misinterpretation of the results of the 2014 Park Visitor Survey, which actually found that although the, the number of visitors to the park had not increased, the number of park users using the, the SPAs had increased considerably. Now, that's the exact opposite to what you would want if this, if this, if this mitigation strategy, this avoidance strategy was, was actually working. I mean, the, the evidence is suggesting the opposite of what the, 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 the actual strategy is meant to develop. We're told that the retained South East Plan, NRM 6, covers us. But if you turn to page 32 on here, 32, section 8. Relevant parties will cooperate with Natural England and landowners and stakeholders in monitoring the effectiveness of avoidance and mitigation measures and monitoring visitor pressure on the SPAR and review slash amend the approach set out in this policy. So if there's no evidence, I mean, suppose we don't get the evidence that it's working, we've got to change it. That's the current policy, that's what it says. So until we have that Natural England evidence, we can't rely on the policy at all. I mean, there is no policy without it. So, I mean, I said, I, I agree with councillor Coburn, it's a very thin document, it's absolutely lacking in evidence. To complete our considerations, I think we absolutely need, I agree with what you said earlier, we absolutely need to call this back to the next meeting when we've got the Natural England's evidence, when they've produced their report. And hopefully, I hope so, it, it, it fills many of these gaps. Thank you.
I, I think, following councillor Coburn's request, and Graham Parrott is going to produce some facts and figures on visitor numbers and everything else that's required within the next week or so. And then, as you pointed out, in the June meeting, the findings of Natural England and assessment of the success of SANG will be discussed. So hopefully, the two together, we should be able to answer a lot of your questions. councillor Forchesky.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I think many of the comments already expressed do beautifully demonstrate just how complex this, this issue is. And if, if we don't understand SPAR and SANGs, it's easy to get lost in the technicality of it. But I do think it's a matter of great importance that we don't use dog poo as a reason for citing why we shouldn't grab some of the issues that have already been so eloquently discussed. And may I add to that, that as a council, we don't even have a dog warden, so we don't really care. It's about educating people, you know, it's about people taking responsibility for their own actions. This council's going to do very little to do that until somebody somewhere gets a better grasp of the situation and says, a council, we don't even have a dog warden. So that says, that shows how much little input we have into the importance of the welfare of our animals. And I, I think that the data that's missing again is crucial. It's how many times we see these reports come before us, what we can make informed choices in, in decisions, because we don't have as much information as we can. And if it's there, why can't we have it? Carol Coburn is absolutely right, it's, it's a missed opportunity. We don't want delaying tactics on this. All we want is to go forward, to understand and have more opportunity to be able to contribute and do it right in line with the law and what's been provided in front of us. And I, again, I reiterate what's been said, it's a missed opportunity, more time wasting. So I look forward to more information so we can make informed choices based on fact, not poo bags hanging on trees in Farnham Park. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, thank you. I think we've taken that on board, that we will produce, or Graham Parrott will produce many facts and figures. As far as dogery is concerned, I think that's the, the job of the, the park ranger to ensure that users of the park comply as possible with, with the hygiene standards that we would expect in this day and age. But thank you for your question. Are there any other questions on this subject? Right, in that case, we will, or Graham Parrott will circulate with the next couple of weeks the facts and figures on the Farnham special avoidance strategy. And we will bring it back at the next meeting in June for Natural England's assessment. So we can move on to the next subject, which is the review of the Waverley Meals on Wheels. And I'd like Katie Webb, if you could address this, please.
Thank you, Chair. On 19th January this year, Community ONS considered a initial board review of the existing and current Waverley Wide Meals on Wheels service. It was agreed that a subcommittee would be established to carry out the in-depth review and identify future priorities for the service and how this might be achieved. This scoping report sets out how the subcommittee intends to undertake this review and members are requested to make any comments.
Right, members, we consider this report. Are you content, content to agree the questions to be asked? And are there any questions that you'd like to ask Katie Webb?
Thank you, Chairman. The only thing I would like to bring to this particular item is that I would recommend to this committee that we sub, no, we don't sub anything, we co-opt Patricia Ellis onto this subcommittee. And so I would ask for your, your support in that suggestion.
councillor Ellis, you're very happy to be co-opted onto this committee, I...
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I did volunteer at the last meeting, actually, to be part of it, but understood that as I was a substitute, this wasn't possible. So I'm happy to be co-opted. Thank you.
Well, I think your experience, particularly with the Rowleys Day Centre in Farnham, your interest in this subject will be greatly appreciated. So thank you for volunteering. councillor Coburn.
I just wondered whether you needed a second, that was all, and whether we were going to vote on it, because I'm delighted to second it.
Yes, sorry, who would like to propose, you would like to propose, and seconded by Carlyle. Thank you very much. So is that agreed by the committee? Yeah, great, thank you. Right, councillor Legall.
In terms of the scope, would it be possible to have a bit, a bit of background in terms of, it, it does say, you know, what are the most important elements and what are the alternative models. But I'd just quite like to have some idea of, if things are going wrong or where things might be improved, where, where there are maybe some failings in the system, just so we get a feel for, 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 for what, what, what needs to, potentially needs to change.
Well, my vice chairman is chairman of the subcommittee on this. I think she's hoping it's going to take about six months to, to complete. But if I can ask her to just give a comment. Unless, Katie, would you like to say how far this review's going?
Sorry, we, we did the initial sort of board review, which sort of gave some of the highlights and issues that we're faced at the moment, particularly around that there'd been a drop in, in service by people using the service by 26%. This review will look at the existing service and the voluntary service will be invited to come in and talk about the model that they deliver at the moment. And some of that can, will be looking at their customer service satisfaction and they will be talking about any areas that they're having problems with. So it will cover all of that.
Thank you, Chairman. And so on page 39, you will see the scope of the review. There are lots and lots of questions that need to be asked and examined. We have to look into all sorts of areas and elements of, of this service. And what we've done is break it down into four main components that we feel we need to look at. And each one will have many questions attached to it. So, you know, it would be like, there'll be lots and lots of threads to follow. But just to focus our minds on what we considered to be the most important questions to begin with, we got it down to four questions, which was, which was no mean feat, really, because there are so many questions to ask. But I think that should help us to move forward with it.
Members, we...
Thank you, Chairman. Just a thought. Just thinking back to the review meetings that we had on overview and scrutiny, one of the points which I think came out quite strongly was, was bringing independent people from the council to, to assist, to co-opt them or bring them in. Might it not be a good idea to bring somebody who is actively involved on, or involved in Meals on Wheels to sit on this committee or to be part of it?
Right, I'll ask my vice chairman once.
Yeah, I mean, that was the whole point of our first meeting, was to talk about all the people we need to talk to about Meals on Wheels. So we are going to go out to absolutely everybody that we can think of. We're going to see what they do. We're going to take advice from them. They're coming in to speak to us. So although they're not going to be, because of the time constraints, really, that they have on their own, they're not going to be part of every single meeting of the committee, the intention is that either we go to them or they come to us. We talk to every single person in the borough who's involved in Meals on Wheels and not just within our borough, but to go to other boroughs to sort out, to look at best practice elsewhere. So, you know, we are trying to do that, but without having a committee of 549, you know, and just have it really focused on what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you, yes. Just to assure you as well, or reassure you, we are going to actually, each of us are going to go out and accompany somebody on, on their delivery so that we can see from the very beginning what happens and what doesn't happen, what maybe should be happening and what shouldn't be happening, if there is anything. And that comes in question three, where it says, what are the views of the staff, volunteers and customers? And we really do mean that. We are actually going to examine that very thoroughly.
councillor Winson.
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting, since I'm a substitute. However, I, I was thinking it more in terms of the, the integrity of overview and scrutiny. And trying to, I mean, you may not find such a, such a beast, but having somebody who is outside the council challenging the points and who's familiar with it, if they're prepared to do it, I just think would be of value to the actual function.
Thank you. I think that deals with that. Are there any other questions that committee members would like to ask on this? Right, in which case we will move on to the next item, which is the performance management report on page 41. And I'd like to ask Laura McKenna if she could introduce the report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The performance report has been through the subcommittee on the 23rd of February and the minutes are attached. All performance indicators this quarter have improved, except for planning appeals allowed, which has worsened. There are a number of recommendations made this quarter, ready for next financial year reporting. These are contained within the cover report as well as at the end of the cover reports. One recommendation or suggestion that I haven't included and would like to put to members, that has come from the performance subcommittee, is to obtain agreement that we continue to monitor the Godwin Museum visits and educational programmes that they're running. I would now like to ask for any comments or questions.
Right, members, if you looked at the various performance regulators, are there any subjects that you wish to discuss? councillor Legall.
It relates to number six on planning, that due to the concerns about the applications lost to appeal, that mandatory training be arranged. No problem with that. I'd heard, which I don't know whether this is true or not, that on appeals, that councils have lost, that there is consideration from central government to remove the new homes bonus on the loss of appeal. I just wondered if you had any comment on that.
Chairman, that is within the government's consultation paper as an option that the government have asked the question about. We have responded to the consultation as a council and we've said that we don't agree with that. We want the government to stick to the original principles of new homes bonus, which is to provide additional finance to areas where there's been additional housing growth and keep it simple.
Thank you. I think that's an issue that we're all aware of, is until we have our local plan in position, the amount of appeals exceed the normal. But hopefully, that will be resolved as soon as the local plan is in position. Are there any other, oh, councillor Coburn, I think.
Yes, I think you probably summed up what I was going to say. I've sat in a public inquiry all day today and I should be sitting in it all day tomorrow. You can give me any amount of training you like, you know, and I'll take it and I'll learn from it. But at the moment, we're in a very unreal situation. We are being faced with a lot of applications that are actually inappropriate. They're inappropriate. In the past, we turned them down and we turned them down for exactly the same reasons now. And in the past, we were respected for our reasons, because they are planning reasons. And now, all this emphasis is on harm and benefit. And we see it time after time, and I heard it again today, yes, there is harm, but the benefit outweighs it. Yes, there is harm, but the benefit outweighs it. Yes, it does destroy the character. And until we have a strategy for this borough, and we've said it 100 times before, where the five-year housing land supply nailed, they were even arguing, they were like two children today, arguing over, you know, the, the exact figure for this housing land supply. You know, it's nonsense. We, as an authority, are not poor at giving permission for houses. Forty-five, if I remember at Weston on the last meeting, you know, we will give permission where the housing, where it's suitable, where what comes in fits in with the character. But as I say, and as you have just said, at the moment, we're in very, very strange times. But I don't think as an authority, we should roll over and accept some of these totally unsuitable applications just because we haven't got this five-year housing land supply. Get the supply, let us do our job and turn down applications for really good planning reasons. We know what they are. You know, we're not making these decisions on the hoof. We know exactly what we're making these decisions on. And give us that five-year housing land supply, give us a chance to get those up. Give me some training, I'll, I'll turn up for training as well. But honestly, it's not the training that's wrong at the moment.
Thank you. I don't think there's any member of this entire council that wouldn't disagree with you, that we are totally frustrated by the lack of progress. And let's hope that within the next month or so, we might eventually get a draft strategy for our local plan. councillor Legall.
I, I agree with you that there may not be many councillors... I agree with you that there may not be many councillors who would disagree with that, but we have to consider what the government is, how the government is positioning themselves. And I've heard Brandon Lewis speaking just a few days ago, where he was saying that people, councils, planning authorities will have to be more realistic, because their children want housing, they want affordable housing, their children's children will want housing, and what he was saying is that it's not just the, and by the way, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with this, in part I do, that it's not just the big Dunstville-type developments that are needed, because they take a long time to build, but it's the smaller ones, the 45s, the hundreds, and this is exactly what he was, the 50s and hundreds, I think is what he said. And so if that is the mindset, it's not surprising to me that the inspectors are reflecting that view, because that is the view of government.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's where we are, but thank you. Any other comments on... So if we can turn now to, if we can turn now to page... There's no, there's no...
It's only one.
What is it?
Page four.
Page four.
Oh, you're doing, this is one here.
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's on there.
I've completely lost one, has it?
There you go. That one.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, it was one second.
Yeah, so I'm asking to make a report and recommendations to page E plus the additional...
But where and what page is that on?
Forty-four, forty-four.
Thirty-four?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Yeah, that one there.
Oh, right, sorry.
Yes, I would like, please, for this committee to consider adding a recommendation that Godalming Museum provide us with KPIs, which they seem, appear not to be doing at the moment, so the subcommittee felt that they should be, and we should be seeing figures on their performance.
So, are you content that we note the performance?
Yes.
Agreed, excellent. Now, being no other matters to discuss, I think that concludes the meeting, so thank you all very much for me.